We ready, Christine?
Okay.
All right, it is 5:30 and so we'd like to start with our work session. This is a work session for City Council training on Open and Public Meetings Act. To make sure that we know what we're doing and we're not breaking the law. And our city attorney, Nicole Cottle, is going to take care of that. So we'll turn the time over to her.
At the mayor and council's pleasure. I can be here or there, whatever you prefer.
I think that's fine.
Okay, great. I'm either way. I'm happy whatever makes you guys happy. That's what makes me happy. I'm not. I was going to but it's like plain. So I'm just going to talk. Um, okay. So yes, as, as the council and mayor are aware, we have to annually do some open and public meeting training. And we wanted to make sure you were all set for this, for this year and for the cycle. So that is tonight. Um, so I like to talk. I've done this training a long, long time, many times. The, the law has not changed hardly at all except for last year. The law changed just a little bit. So we'll talk about the change. Um, I think it's helpful for, for understanding and also helpful for reality, right? We'll talk about that. Um, so the Open and Public Meetings Act exists so that there is transparency and so that the public business is taken care of in public. There are some exceptions to that and we'll talk about that. Um, also, as you know, you have a really wonderful staff who makes sure that all of the underlying, underlying details that go along with open and public meetings happen. So we won't talk about that nitty gritty, the things like how many days before the publishing in the newspaper you need to get it to the newspaper.
All right, it is 5:30 and so we'd like to start with our work session. This is a work session for City Council Training on Open and Public Meetings Act. To make sure that we know what we're doing and we're not breaking the law. And our city attorney, Nicole Cottle, is going to take care of that, so we'll turn the time over to her.
At the mayor and council's pleasure. I can be here or there, whatever you prefer.
I think that's fine.
Okay, great. I'm either way. I'm happy whatever makes you guys happy. That's what makes me happy. I'm not. I was going to but it's like plain, so I'm just gonna talk. Um, okay, so yes, as, as the council and mayor are aware, we have to annually do some open and public meeting training. And we wanted to make sure you were all set for this, for this year and for the cycle. So that is tonight. Um, so I like to talk, I've done this training a long, long time, many times. The, the law has not changed hardly at all except for last year. The law changed just a little bit. So we'll talk about the change. Um, I think it's helpful for, for understanding and also helpful for reality, right? We'll talk about that. Um, so the Open and Public Meetings Act exists so that there is transparency and so that the public's business is taken care of in public. There are some exceptions to that and we'll talk about that. Um, also, as you know, you have a really wonderful staff who makes sure that all of the underlying, underlying details that go along with open and public meetings happen. So we won't talk about that nitty gritty, the things like how many days before the publishing in the newspaper you need to get it to the newspaper. We leave that all to the experts and be thankful that we have those folks that are so awesome and make sure you guys are all covered. And, and oftentimes that is the topic of auditing. So we're very careful to make sure that we are very detailed and that all of the meetings are documented really well. And so you're, you're, you're well covered in that area. And we've done, we've done a little bit of, um, you know, going through that together. And so we're all set. So the way that is best, I think, to talk about public meeting, Open and Public Meetings Act is to talk about really two definitions. The first is what's a meeting? And that definition is what changed last year just a little bit, okay? So a meeting is any gathering of local officials of any kind, right? So sometimes I get questions like, well, does that mean, what if I, what if I am on the Utopia Board? Or what if I'm on, um, the planning mission? Or just any kinds of other boards you serve on many? The answer is most likely yes, it applies to that situation as well, that group, most likely. Now, does it apply to the Science Club? This doc, this law does not apply to the, oh, Rotary, sorry, is that what it's called now? I don't know. Okay. But to all the other groups, yes. And then a meeting is where, a meeting, the, the broad definition of meeting is where two or more of you are gathered together to talk about topics that relate to your duties as a city, okay? Your duties as a city council member. Now, let's talk about the change because that's the most important part. You guys all know what a meeting is. You all fully understand that, okay? More, more than two. Yes, yes, thank you, good clarification. Um, so you guys all know what a meeting is. But what changed in legislation after a long time of no change is they started to have a lot of questions and a lot of local government institutions in particular, in particular concerned about social gatherings, okay? And so you often heard and probably heard in some of your training that social gatherings kind of had a little bit of an exemption and it was not that big a deal. And really people would counsel you, your lawyer would counsel you to just not talk about city business, even if you're all sitting at the same table. Or if this is hosted by the city, is that a public meeting? Do we need to notify the public of that kind of meeting? So the state law a couple of years ago did change and it clarified that those social gatherings, regardless of how those are put together, regardless of how they're, how you are interacting at those, that those are not necessarily public meetings. Now, best practice still is you typically notice those if all of you are gonna be there, right? If everyone's gonna be there or if it's a city, um, function where, where you, let's say you're the hope, you're, you as a city council are the host of the activity, okay? It's the firemen, maybe that's not the right, that's not the right choice. Let's say that you do a citizen congratulations luncheon every year that you host. You would typically still post that as a public, um, meeting where you will be and post it to the public note. Yeah, great, great example, yeah. So we would typically still do that just as best practice. But the change in state law made it clear that you don't necessarily have to stop, okay? And that it's okay for you to be there together, it's okay for you to socialize together. The law clarified that. So it was really kind of an interesting reason for the clarification because that had been an ongoing concern, okay? So there's, there's that section of it, okay? The other thing that I think is important to understand is that the other reason that we take this so seriously is we always want to make sure that all of your decisions, all of the decisions that you hold as the legislative body can number one, be defended and that, that, um, I kind of say it like you win. And by that I mean what you decide as a legisla, legislative body is, is kind of sacred and that what you want happen, to happen, can be insured. And by that, we never want to lose on procedure. So that's why we train on this. That's why we take this open and public meetings so seriously and that's why we document so closely. Because the very easiest thing for someone to do that might challenge one of your decisions would be to look at our various meetings, look at our notices and see if they could beat us on procedure. So we always want to make sure to be mindful of that and to be mindful of the, the, um, procedures we need to go through, okay? So those two things are kind of the, the highlight things. Of course, as you know, we, we talked about fostering transparency, ensuring that the, the public business is done in public, um, encouraging activity in there. Uh, let's talk about, um, go through what is a meeting. Let's talk about the closed meetings. So there, as, as you heard him mention, there are a couple of exceptions to, and as you're, you are all fully aware, there are few exceptions to a normal open meeting. Um, those exceptions, uh, have to be either, either posted on agenda, pre-posted or if you have need of an executive session, you can have that. You have to just state on the record what those, what those, kind of those basic three exceptions, right? And you're familiar with those. So if you're gonna talk about real estate, let's talk about what that means. Does that mean any real estate? Maybe, maybe not. We judge that fairly closely and tightly because of course again, we don't ever want to be challenged, right? And if we are challenged, we want to win on that, okay? So the rule is also closed meetings, um, some closed meetings still can be recorded and still have to be recorded. Not all closed meetings, but certainly those typically that deal with real estate. So the bright line rules that I like to remember are real estate transactions or situations where you're gonna put the city at a detriment in those cases because there's information that needs to be kept, um, back while you're making the deal. Then there is, um, uh, you're gonna be talking about a personnel issue or about professional competence. And then there is the, um, sort of security measures and other things like that that might fall into that. Sometimes, once in a while, so security measures are, are the typical ones, okay? You might not want to talk about where you're gonna place new cameras in City Hall so that you have some protections, um, in City Hall. You might not want to talk about, uh, how you're gonna run security at the, at Peach Day's event based on some of the national happenings. You might not want the public to understand some of those security measures. And so you might hold those in. Um, some of the other things that kind of fit into that can be a little bit unique as it relates to, um, I've had a couple of situations where security ma, measures related to a public safety situation that might be ongoing, okay? That's more rare. But let's say that you had a situation and, and it'll be even more rare probably in a city like Bergen City, right? Very safe, very, um, you know, very safe community. Um, sometimes you have situations where there's a, there, there's a public safety issue that needs to be addressed. Those are much more rare, but those could fit into that as well. I don't know, I mean, maybe in my whole 27 years now, I've, I've had that kind twice. Um, rest are much more common, right? The other thing to know about closed meetings is, is you can have discussions, which, which you're familiar with and which you do and have those discussions. We also, once in a while, you'll hear either Derek or I or you guys will say, hey, we better, better skinny back up and make sure we're right on topic. That's really important to, that we stay right on the topic we said we were gonna go into closed session on. Um, and, and shifting, right? So we wouldn't want to have a situation where we closed the public meeting based on real estate and we ended up talking about a, a personnel issue or professional competence. We, we would need to come back out and address that topic publicly and then go back in, okay? So we just kind of, um, monitor that carefully, you know? The other thing that you know about polit, uh, sorry, closed meetings is you can talk, have all the information given to you. You can ask all the questions. You can, um, so deliberate the questions, those kind of things. But you can't take the vote. You can't take your actions in closed session. We have to either come back out or you can direct that on another council agenda you want a particular action taken and do that later.
On clarification on that. I sit on another board. Always there to.
Yes, first. I'm here.
Um, just mentioned talking about something that has been expanded other than brought out like this subject but not being considered. Are you, are you saying that the Open Public Meetings Act allows you to talk about that? Or the proper thing would be to talk about it in closed session on that board meeting? Put it on the closed session.
Yeah, so that absolutely would be best practice. So a couple of things about that. The first is, and we've talked about this internally just a little bit, it's not uncommon to have on, on every city council agenda, every other Thursday or however many times a particular body meets, a general item number eight, closed session if needed, right? And sometimes you have just a closed session if needed and you don't have a reason stated on your agenda. We are pretty, we're pretty good about putting on our agenda what we think the closed session's gonna be about. Best practice is that. But it's also completely legal and appropriate just to have the opportunity to have a closed session if you need one. To your exact question, Mayor, if you go into closed sessions, you deliberate on an item and you are then going to subsequently take action on it, there are a couple ways that could go. The first is you could have an item on your agenda, already agendas, and it could be about that issue. And you could say, we are gonna go into closed session and come back out. If that issue is already agenda, you could do it that same night. If it's not, then the best practice and most appropriate and, and most defensible is going to be correct that to be put on and, and another agenda as an agenda item so that it has some public, you know, notice there. Now, there are some exceptions to that. And there are some exceptions that don't necessar, necessarily apply to our body here but do apply to some others. Some of the exceptions are things like, um, their ethics committees that have been set up by some local jurisdictions. And sometimes those function in a way where you can deliberate and take an action on the same night. Um, we don't, we don't do that and we don't probably need to, um, spend too much time. But to those of you that sit on other boards, there are other exceptions that just don't necessarily apply to us and may apply in a different situation. But very few, so, very few exceptions to that. Any other questions before I go to the other couple of items? Ah, of course.
Wait, I didn't.
Nope, no worry. Okay, so I will all, that's almost it. Unless there are other questions, I would say that the only thing I would hit again is of course, the reason that we take such care is of course we want to act as local government officials in full transparency and also protect the interests of our residents and citizens. And so sometimes that does require a closed session. We follow those rules very carefully and very closely. And you as a council have given the staff good guidance on that as well. And we want to make sure we always do that, most importantly, because we want your decisions to stand and not be challenged. And we want that, that, um, very important legislative power to always be guarded and safeguarded. Um, if that's violated, which doesn't happen here, but in other, some other places where sometimes they do it wrong, just so everybody's aware, the decision can be challenged. And, and as I mentioned, those are, this is all low hanging fruit. So it's the easiest way to challenge. And that decision could go a bunch of ways. The court could say you don't, your decision is undone. Or the court could say you did this wrong, go back and make it different. Or worst case scenario, there could be damages and in some cases, legal fees. So attorney's fees, that's pretty rare. In fact, actually I can only give a couple of cases where that's been awarded. Um, but I think it's just good to be aware because it's not that often that the legislature and the courts have granted the ability to collect attorney's fees on, on city screw ups, right? So I think it's important one to be aware. And, and, um, so I'd say in closing, you have awesome staff who has got this dialed for you. But if you ever have questions about something or about another board that you're on or about a, I'm, hey, I'm getting invited to this thing with all my council members. Am I okay? You can always reach out and, and I can help you with that. And I can answer any questions. Okay. Great. Very good.
All right, thanks Nicole.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and end our work session and we will give everybody a chance to visit the restroom or get a drink. And we'll start our regular session at six o'clock.
By the way, I forgot to tell you, today was Bring Your Mother to Work Day. Hip, Arizona. As she went, I said, did you get some crayons? And so she had something to watch.
But she has been calling me every day. Restriction going on at my house. I'm wondering if I could leave and come take her blood pressure, because she's just about, mom.
You're working at your house, just shutting her out, so can you leave to work at your?
It's just an automatic, mom, you just push the button.
That's awesome.
I love her.
All right, folks, it is six o'clock, and so we will go ahead and get started with our, uh, city council meeting this April third, 2025. We appreciate those who are here, those that are here to participate, and those who are here to observe. We appreciate your, uh, your involvement in our city council meeting. We will start, we, uh, actually started at five, not started, but we had a work session at five thirty, which, uh, we went over our, uh, open meet, Open and Public Meetings Act. Make sure we understood it so that we, uh, aren't breaking the law in the future, not that we have in the past, but just to make sure that we understand, so we continue to be compliant. That's why I should have said it. We'll begin with a thought reading or an invocation by, uh, Bishop Rick Tanner, the Brigham City Fourth Ward, one of my favorite people in the entire world, and then following him, I will, uh, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Bishop Tanner.
Heavenly Father, we're very grateful for this beautiful day. We're grateful for this time of the year, and we're grateful, Heavenly Father, for our city, this wonderful community in which we live. As we've met in a, a council meeting this evening, we pray for the Spirit to guide us, that there will be good communication, that there will be kindness and consideration, and that to any decisions that might be made this evening will be in the best interest of our community. We are grateful, Heavenly Father, to live in a wonderful place, grateful for the freedoms we enjoy, for the abundance of the blessings we have each day. We pray for peace, we pray, pray for individual strength in our homes and our families. We thank the Heavenly Father for the community, and ask for thy blessings here this evening, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Would you mind standing and joining me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd like to move on, uh, our first item of business, I guess technically is, uh, we have a new employee to recognize, and his name is Andrew Hernandez. He is an equipment operator and our public works, uh, specifically for the parks. We, uh, appreciate him joining our staff and, and looking over our parks that we enjoy. We have, looks like, four items of consent and would entertain a motion to accept the consent items. We have a motion by Councilmember Smith, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hip. Uh, do we have any, uh, um, questions or, uh, clarifications before we move to a vote? Oh, yes, let me move to that, thank you. Mm-hmm, that's exactly right. Yes, uh, our fourth item of, of the consent is the appointment of the Planning Commission Vice Chair, which is Ms. Cindy McConkey, and we appreciate her service on the Planning Commission. Uh, as far as the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. We're going to start off with a public hearing, this is a public hearing, for in consideration of an ordinance amending the compensation for executive municipal officers, and our city administrator, Derek Euler, will present.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, thanks, Council. So, um, it's been many months ago that the city council approved, uh, this year's fiscal budget, and in this year's fiscal budget, we had, um, some money set aside for the fire department to go to a, essentially, a step-and-grade system. Um, we've been working on this for many years, so the, the approved budget that's in the council's budget included, uh, the funding available to move our fire department to a step-and-grade system. Um, as we've been working on that over the past couple of years, we've finally kind of come up with a plan. Uh, that plan was obviously presented to the department and, and this, uh, city administrative staff and, and with our finance director. Um, as part of that plan, um, to essentially, uh, create the separation between supervisors and subordinates, um, there's two adjustments that need to be made to, um, to the, well, uh, the chief is appointed, and the new state code requires any assistant to the chief, uh, any wage adjustments to that to be, to have a separate public hearing on that, so that's what we're doing tonight, um, because of the step-and-grade plan and the adjustments that were, uh, needed, uh, to have that full separation within our fire department. I will tell you, there's roughly a hundred thousand dollars worth of funding that was available in the budget. Um, all of these changes actually were just under seventy thousand, so, uh, the step-and-grade system that we implemented was less than what was in the council's budget, so there's no budget, budget adjustment needed with what we're doing. It's just the new state recode, code requires any changes to wages of any appointed, uh, officials or, uh, the assistants that are out to be all the public hearing and, and adopt by ordinance, so that's what we're doing.
Do you have any questions for our city administrator before we open the public hearing? Right, that's what we need then, is a motion to open a public hearing specifically for the amending of the compensation of executive municipal officers. We have a motion by Councilmember Smith, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jeffries, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We are now are in our public hearing. If anybody would like to make a public comment, uh, specifically, uh, referring to the ordinance amending the compensation for executive municipal officers, we invite you to come to the podium, please state your name, where you're from, and we would love to hear from you for up to three minutes. I hate to move things along, but I will, as, uh, council, it appears there are no public comments, so I would enjoy, uh, uh, a, a motion to close public hearing. So move. That's Councilmember Hip with the motion, we have a second. Second by Councilmember Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think, thank you, motion passes. We are now out of public hearing, and we now can go to a, is there any action on this? It's the approval of the ordinance. We now can have an action, if the action is what the council, uh, uh, would like, the action would be to approve the ordinance amending the compensation for executive municipal officers. You can say so moved, whatever.
So moved.
By Councilmember Smith.
Okay, so moved.
If we have a motion by Councilmember Smith, we have a second. I can, second by Councilmember Hip. This is an ordinance, we will be going roll call. We'll start with Councilmember Jeffries, move to his left. Jeffries and I.
Abbott and I.
Abbott and I.
Matt and I.
Jeff and I.
Thank you, motion passes. I appreciate the, uh, first of all, the example of our police department who did this type of thing just a, a year ago, and, uh, and for the chiefs in the fire department and working this out, and, and we're happy to make sure that our wonderful emergency services are compensated correctly, and they have a plan that they can look towards for advancement. Uh, we'll now open up for public comments, which is different than the public hearing, because public comments can be on anything that you like. We'd like to invite those that are residents of Brigham City, own ground in Brigham City, and can vote in Brigham City. They would like to come to the podium and make public comment, we'd love to hear from you. If you state your name, love to hear from you for up to three minutes. Uh, public comments are now open. Or in high school, thank you, Air Pro Tim. Fox Elder High School, not Bear River. Not to put any pressure, it is a beautiful day outside, so we can get out there sooner. We will close our public comments then and move on to our city administrator report. Do you have anything you'd like to share? All right. Do we have councilmember comments? We'd like to give you an opportunity to make those comments. We'll start with Councilmember Hip and move to his right, if he has, if you'd like to take that time.
The only thing I would say is I had an opportunity to meet with the library board, and I hadn't had that opportunity, and, uh, it, uh, an individual that shared some of their skills, they played the guitar, they went through some music, they read a book, and I thought, we should probably do that at the opening of our city council meetings. But it was, it was designed for children, and there's just a lot of remarkable services that are available at the library. The, I, I just think it's an opportunity for those who are here or listening, to take a chance and go down to the library, crack a book, see what's going on. Got, we've got a terrific program down there.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hip. Councilmember Jensen. We want to thank Councilmember Jensen, it is tax season, and so it's rather busy for him this time of year.
We're all busy, Mayor, you make a commitment. I think so. Um, I just, I just saw that it's, uh, the Pride cleanup going on, and I know this, I had a friend who moved outside of the city limits, and he doesn't get those services, and he's a little upset. And I, I think our city does a great job helping the citizens, uh, maintain their property, and it makes an effort to help us like that, so I think that's great.
Thank you, Matt. Councilmember Smith.
Can we save up a year long for the? I haven't started yet for the house.
That's your house.
Hopefully, that doesn't get over your neighborhood.
Yeah, it's behind us.
Um, had the opportunity to go down the railroad, crossing the bridge, groundbreaking, that was great, uh, Philly even, good event, and rain even showed up before us, I thought that was very appropriate. For us, I didn't know that. Um, but, I, I don't, that's all.
Thanks, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Trox.
I attended the Fair River Association of Government Human Services Board Meeting. Um, there's a lot of changes and, for things that they're, they're going through. They do have a new executive director, and, um, more board members are coming on board. So, a couple of the main announcements is that they're starting, uh, in the next couple of weeks, a community needs assessment that, um, I can forward to, forward to our, our public page.
This is for the homeless account?
Uh, no, that, um, it's, the community needs assessment.
Okay, that would be the Cammy.
Yeah.
To put on our, uh, on the app?
Yeah.
In social media?
Exactly.
Yeah, the Cammy section, absolutely.
That'd be great. And then, um, and then I did attend the bridge opening, and that, that was great to see that breaking ground and getting ready to go. I'm excited for all the changes that are being done with that building. That's it.
Uh, it was held on April first, and that was done on purpose, by the way, because the theme of the, uh, the groundbreaking was, it's not a joke, we're really building the bridge, so. Councilmember Jeffries.
Do you come up with that?
I, I, I sound like, I seem like a great kid.
That sounds, sounds like something you do. I do, I, apparently, I don't do enough, so I don't really have anything to.
That's not true, we appreciate you, but thank you. Uh, the only thing I would, uh, yes, share with, with, on, on public record, uh, of course, it's, it's been kind of somber for Brigham City, uh, the last few weeks, um, and that, and even yesterday, uh, to be fair, with the announcements of, of things that have to do with law enforcement, and it hits them the hardest, because they see the worst of, of humanity in their job, them and, uh, others. But, uh, my take on it, you may find odd or sacrilegious, I'm glad that those things happen in our, in our jurisdiction. I'll tell you why, because we have the best police department around. They handle it professionally and get the job done. We've, we've solved things that our community couldn't do, they were coming through ours and just on whims. I, uh, I'm happy that we have the police department and, and professionals that we have there that, uh, get things done, and I'm happy that they follow through, and they, because of that, Brigham City is a safer place to live, no matter that those types of things happen in our community. We should take solace in the fact that they were caught in our community, and that those things aren't going on anymore. So I just wanted to mention that, tell Chief to tell his department, thank you so much, and on behalf of our community, as the elected official, to make sure they understand and know how much we appreciate them. We'll move on to our action items. Our first action item is the consideration of a resolution adopting the Main Street Strategic Plan. We'll invite Mr. Paul Larson to present.
Thank you, I'm going to, I guess I don't actually have to connect that. I will go through a, hopefully, fairly thick presentation to show you what the contents of this plan look like. Um, this is something that's been developed over the last year, uh, parallel, in, on a parallel track with the general plan. Uh, much of what you see in the downtown revitalization element of the general plan is, is consistent with, and again, parallel with what's in this plan. The difference is, this is a, a strategic plan, it's much more focused, detailed, and it also includes elements that are required, excuse me, as part of our, members. as part of our membership in the Utah Main Street Program and Main Street America. Um, we have a couple of members of our Main Street Program Board here with us tonight. They were involved in putting this together as well, want to thank them. Um, Downtown Rede- Redevelopment Services was our consultant on this. Um, so as we go through this, there's a, there's an executive summary. Uh, the, the plan is divided into kind of two broad categories, short-term and long-term, uh, goals and, and, uh, objectives. Um, so we went through, uh, uh, just, just to, to kind of give you a little, if this shows up. Um, I think I may be showing you the more detailed, yeah, this is the seventy-four page detailed plan. Let me switch over to the executive summary, which is meant to be shared here in a more, more appropriate for this kind of meeting. Unless you want to go through seventy-four pages of detailed fine print, along with a fairly extensive database. So, this is, um, the way the strategic plan is organized, um, built on resources, plans for all phases, goal-driven and specific. Processes that we, through defining the resources that we have. Is it, this is sort of, if you're familiar with strategic planning, a SWAP process, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. We don't necessarily use that terminology, but that's very much what, uh, what the format of this is. Um, these, you know, we went through sort of, this is by no means an exhaustive list, but the assets that we have in downtown. The obligations and limitations, again, under that strategic planning framework, you could think of this as, uh, weaknesses or threats. Or values. We, we identified a mission statement to revitalize downtown Brigham City and celebrate it as a place where the community thrives. And a vision, downtown Brigham City will promote partnerships and cultivate a support network for community-led downtown revitalization, utilizing the proven Main Street approach. Visioning process, defining, excuse me, ideas. And again, as I alluded to, show the long-term goals. This is organized, one of the requirements of the Main Street Program is to identify what's called a transformation strategy. Essentially, it's a, a strategy that says, this is how we're going to get our community, our downtown district, from where it is here to where we would like it to. That's our transformation strategy. And in, in this case, we've, we've landed on art, arts and culture because of many of the assets that are downtown lend themselves to that, as well as pre- preserving character, preserving the, the character that our communities come to identify with downtown. And that colorful graphic you see at the bottom is the, the Main Street Four Point Approach, Economic Vitality, Design, Promotion and Organization. Um, and there will be elements of all of these as we move forward. Oh, the short-term ideas under Economic Vitality is to, I create, and, uh, this is where that sizable database comes into play. A business inventory in our downtown district and, uh, in a format that we can easily update that probably, uh, quarterly or at least biannually. Um, a ten, ten, ten analysis, ten, ten, ten is the concept of having, reaching what we call, uh, a critical mass of businesses downtown. Ten businesses that are in the food space, restaurants, eateries, candy stores, et cetera. Uh, ten businesses that are boutique or specialty type retail and ten businesses that stay open after six P M. Um, reason for that last bullet point is that the statistics show on a nationwide average at least, about seventy percent of retail purchases are made after six P M. So, by hoping to reach a point where we have businesses remaining open that late, that will increase the activity downtown. Under promotion is the idea of creating newsletter and creating resources that will disseminate that. Design, uh, improving the plaza in front of the courthouse, um, as a gathering space and, and, uh, the, uh, the, uh, space that the community can use for a variety of reasons. And then, excuse me, under organization is CRM software. Business inventory, I won't go into detail and read everything here, but you've got the document, hopefully you can read that. And ten, ten analysis, again, um, the newsletter, plaza, CRM software. See, these are organized so there are specific points within each one of objectives and, and strategies to accomplish these goals. Long-term ideas, under Economic Vitality, recruiting missing businesses that we identify along the way. A marketing program and activating youth and young professionals. Under promotion, implementing an arts and cultural district. Under design, streetscape and lane reduction from one hundred north to two hundred south. And under organization, and again, keep in mind, this is a long-term objective, is hiring a full-time manager. Uh, to get to fully accredited status under the Main Street Program, that is, that is one requirement, that there be a full-time manager. Um, to get there will require a number of steps and, uh, so anyway, here, here again, bullet points of, of ways to accomplish the various objectives. Under recruiting businesses, the marketing program, um, the arts and cultural district, streetscape project, and the full-time manager. This is not us saying, hey, city, budget the money to hire a full-time manager. By the time you reach this point in your program, my forecast, I guess, is that you will spin this out as a five oh one C three organization. It will have a board and a, um, manager. City would need to put resources into that, but there will need to be other resources identified as well, including funding that's available at the state level as well as private, uh, funding. And to work on getting all of that together. So, that is sort of a summary of the, the master plan. Happy to answer any questions, and I, I'll, like I say, Daniel and Lester here. Any questions?
Do you have any questions for Mr. Larson or other folks that are involved with the Main Street Program? So, you've got, we were going through the packet stuff, there's things that look like they've been accomplished and things that have, uh, how are, how are those things going as far as things that were going to be done in quarter three, four, twenty-five?
Yeah, I, I would say it's slow.
Okay.
Yeah, one of, uh, so, one of the real milestones has been getting this plan in place, completed, adopted, and ratified by the city council, so we can say we do have a plan. And beyond that, we need to start working on bringing resources to bear. Resources in terms of people primarily, getting people onto the board, getting people, getting committees populated. Four points that we, uh, looked at on an earlier slide, um, there, in a fully functional Main Street Program, you would have committees organized under each one of those four points. An economic vitality committee, a design committee, a promotion committee, and an organization committee. We're years away from that. But we can start, um, and work towards that goal. And the way the program is set up, it's one that can be flexible, it's one that can grow into the full-fledged program. I don't think there's any accredited program anywhere in the nation that started out from day one accredited. In Utah, there are three tiers of programs. There's tier one, tier two, and tier three. Tier one is, you know, that, that probably has very few resources. As a district, they think they would, would like to get revitalized, but doesn't know quite how to go about it. They can apply to the state and get designated a tier one organization and that brings some resources to bear. Tier two is the tier that we're in. We have, we've done a lot over thirty or forty years that, that, uh, work has been going on Main Street. We've got a lot of things that we're putting in right now, um, as we put together, I think last year, we, we, uh, organized our budget, the city's budget, so that we could demonstrate. One of the requirements was, have a budget. And my question to the program was, well, we have all these line items that do things downtown, can't I reference for you where those line items are? They're good. But no, it needs to be at a specific page with all of that. So, without changing where money's expended or, or the amounts or anything like that, we did that. We created a page within your budget that all of those pre-existing lines are set up that show it's fairly substantial amount of money that goes into downtown, including Peach Days, putting banners, including the maintenance work we do downtown, the facade grants and so on. Um, and so, we, we've, we've met all of the requirements for tier two. We are an affiliate program with the national, national program, we've met those standards. In fact, we just, just last week, I got notification from the national program that we are approved as a, affiliate status again for another year. That's an annual reauthorization thing that we go through. So, um, again, to achieve accredited, uh, oh, one other thing that happens at tier two on the state level, there is money that flows. So, we have, um, I'd have to sit down and tally up all of the grant money that's flowed into downtown through the Main Street Program, the Utah Program. Uh, it's a fairly substantial amount. We now have access to another grant that is coming through the Utah Program called the Revive and Reside Grant. We have four building owners downtown that are, that qualify for that and are working on applications. And so, it, it does open up resources for us. At accredited status, and again, I, my prediction is you're at least five years away from, to get to that point. A lot of things we're doing now are working towards that, but we will need to get a, a board fully fleshed out, get those committees functioning and get a, a full-time manager on board. Those are probably the more critical points that we'll need to accomplish to reach accredited status. I could go on, as you can see, I could go on and on, but.
I, I just noticed on page eight, right there, first Brigham City is spelled wrong.
That's.
You're looking on Brigham City.
Right where I am.
How the rest of the country spells it.
Oh, yeah, well, huh, I, yeah, okay. Yeah, we need to fix that. Yeah. I can't tell you how many times I've answered the phone and had somebody say, are you with Brigham City? And I said, no, I'm with Brigham City, so, yeah, uh, or Bingham City, yeah.
I've been, um, I know you've worked really hard on this, we're going on what, year four almost? It's kind of started.
Yeah, probably three or four years that this has started.
Throughout the whole, um, steps and everything, I noticed that almost ninety percent of this, in order for these action items to happen, really depends on volunteer time from your board and your, the community. And, um, I'd like to just amend that, so you have a few people that have just.
Yeah, we've got.
Put in so much time and effort and training the last three or four years from downtown.
Got a couple of them in the room today.
To keep this going, um, and so, I think that they need to be recognized and hopefully, um, this, this is, you know, boards are hard to keep going with volunteer time. Um, do you have, with the businesses downtown and the community events, do you have a lot of communication with like the Chamber of Commerce? And the library and all the different types of things that are going on? Um, kind of integrate some of those, some of the strategy?
That's something I can improve on in my own work. I know that Celeste and Daniel do a lot of that. Um, it's something I need to get better at frankly, excuse me. But, but yeah, as the, as the board gets populated and volunteers start to come on board, that will be something that needs to, to happen on a regular basis, would be more outreach, more involvement. Um, one thing to keep in mind with this, and it's something we need to drive home. It can sometimes be thought that the Main Street Program is a merchant program. It's only for the businesses to run and operate it. But we want the businesses involved, but it's really a community program. So, we can have people in the community who have never had and, and don't have a business on Main Street, but love Main Street, love downtown, want to find a way that they can help make it better. Those are people, if you know them, that would be ideal to work on this program, along with merchants who might see the vision and want to get involved.
That's a, that's a really good point, because this is a community.
It is.
And strategy.
Absolutely, yeah. There's an identity involved, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I, I know, in all the years I've been working here, long before I ever even heard of the Main, well, actually, heard of the Main Street Program when I first came here, because there used to be a Main Street Program in Brigham City. It was, ended like a few years after I got here and it's, it hasn't had the program for twenty years or more. Um, but, um, where was I going with that? Um, the, or I shouldn't have diverged, because now I forget what I was going to say, but it was, it was really good. Maybe you'll come back after and, um.
I think, I think you've done a great job, Paul, on the board. And I think we can, unless there's any other questions, that, um, either take a motion to approve it? And adopt the Main Street Strategic Plan? Okay, we have a motion by council member Jeffries and a second by council member Jeff, by council member Jensen. All those, let's see, this is a resolution, I think it's roll call, isn't it? Resolutions, okay. Probably council member Hip and move to his right.
Hip's an aye.
Jensen's an aye.
Ryan's aye.
Abbott and aye.
President's an aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
I, I did remember, and I'll be short. Ever since I've gotten here, whenever I go anywhere, does anybody knows anything about Brigham City? They always say, oh, yeah, your Main Street is fabulous. And so, it is very much tied to the identity of Brigham City.
Perfect, thank you, Paul. Uh, next we'll move on to a consider, I'm sorry, council member Smith said that Maddox, and we all know that Maddox is in there. But everybody that comes to Maddox doesn't live here, thinks it's in Brigham. We'll move on to a consideration of an ordinance amending Brigham City zoning map by changing the zoning district from A one agriculture to R M seven multi, multiple residential on approximately four point five acres located at twelve fifty-five north Main Street. And Mr. Bradley is here to present.
Yes, mayor and council, uh, as mentioned, uh, here is the location. Uh, the applicants are requesting that zone change. Uh, here is the general plan map that's been updated, identifying that area that was adopted on, on March sixth. This area is the same designation as the previous, uh, general plan map of the medium-density residential. And the, the zoning districts for a medium-density residential are one. And the zoning districts for medium-density residential are R16 and RM7, and they've requested the RM7. There's the two zone maps. Here is the, the current zoning map that shows the A1 location, and so the RM7 would be the same zoning that you have with the Visionary Homes North Point subdivision. And that is the, the request before you. The planning commission, of the public hearing on March fourth, made recommendations to the city council based on the staff comments, recommendations, and the noted findings of fact.
Right. Thank you, Mark. Does council have any clarification or questions for Mr. Bradley?
Just clarification, the RM7 is out of seven thousand, why me that?
No, the RM7 is, yeah, so it's a seven, basically seven dwelling units per acre, or if you did a individual subdivision, single-family lots, it'd be minimum seven thousand square foot lot. And I think that's what you were asking about. And so, that, that seven represents those two different standards. They did present a, a concept plan where they're looking at doing a, a townhome development in this area if things go well.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, we'll call for an action. All right, well, I, there's no questions, any answers, move that we approve the amendment Brigham City zoning map by changing the zoning district from A1, RM seven acres, twelve fifty-five North Main. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Smith.
Second.
Taken by Councilmember Jeffries. Jensen, who's Jensen?
Over here.
Dave was down there for a year, so, thank you, Matt. We, uh, this will be a roll call. We'll, we'll start with Councilmember Jeffries, move to his left.
Hip's an aye.
Brad's an aye.
Ian's aye.
Jensen's an aye.
Hip's an aye.
Thank you. So everyone knows, we have two Daves up here on the stand, so whoever goes first gets to use his first name. The second one has to use a second. That's why we giggle up here sometimes.
Sometimes we can't recall what that is.
Yeah. Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to our third action item, was a consideration of a resolution enacting a special event policy and procedure and adopting associated special event fees, and we'll invite our own Jackie Wardle to present.
There we go.
There you go. Now you're on.
Action. And the special event has been revamped quite heavily. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review it and look at that. If you open it up and look at your special event fees, some of the bigger, the biggest changes are, you'll notice that it has been condensed into just basic fees and a small table of some of the fees that we are going to try and charge. I will walk you through just a little bit of how this came about, and hopefully it makes sense, and please ask questions if you have any. The special event application fee is a hundred dollars with a late fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. And then, there was great discussion about Manaway Reservoir and the closure there, and whether or not that should be something that can be reserved or used as a special event. And so, we decided that that would have to come with city administrator approval. So, um, that's some of the fees there. The Manaway Reservoir fee, a hundred dollars per day plus a five dollar per, per participant, if it's over fifty, over fifty, um, people that are using Manaway Reservoir or the area around it, like, people like to reserve, to go around the dyke, or to use the property that's in that area. If it is over fifty people, then we will charge a five dollar per participant plus a hundred dollars per day. Um, the Manaway Reservoir launching fee changed to twenty dollars. And then, this displacing the public fee, the city property for a hundred dollars per day, that's that big space on the redlined one where it had all of those, like, park rentals not associated with the park Bowery. It was mostly like a green space type of rental, like, if somebody wanted to have a party or some kind of event on the, the green space inside of a park. And that was kind of hard, trying to decide whether or not, how that would be associated with the fee. As you can see in the redlined one, there was several fees that were associated with that, depending on what the park was. What we decided would be an easier way to go about that is if you, if you are displacing the public, and, which meaning saying that you want to reserve a green space at our park, and it's making it so that the public cannot use that, it's a hundred dollars per day. And then, again, with that same fee, if you have more than fifty participants there, if it's going to be like a larger, um, group, then again, we would charge that five dollars per participant. So, that kind of condensed that whole area there from that green space and, and put it into just that small, that small and easy-to-read type of fee right there. And then, the firework shows, that did not change, and then this little, um, table down below that was that departmental fee, which you can see before, if you look at the redlined again, if you can see that, we were trying to charge for every little thing that might be possible that would come up during a special event, whether it was cones, tree closures, whether you needed to have staff there, and it was, um, like I said, we went through a lot of meetings trying to condense this and trying to hear how it made sense to where it would be applicable and, um, easy for us to charge and actually cover those costs that we might need. And so, what we came up with was, um, for the streets and intersections, if you're going to close, um, a street or intersection, if it's one to three, it would be three hundred dollars. And this would be, including our, if you needed a traffic control. And then, um, four plus intersections, same kind of fee. Obviously, this would be for parades, runs, um, things like that, that people would want to have a special event for, um, where they would need the city services, especially for, like, sort of the public works of closing, closing streets, or any kind of those services that need to be. Obviously, most events come with the fact that we're going to have to have extra garbage and, um, probably some street sweeping and cleanup, that kind of thing. We just figured we would cover that for all those kinds of events, that we know that that's going to happen. That is going to impact the city with garbage and those kind of cleanup things. So, hopefully, that is pretty self-explanatory. And then, on the next page, the next pages is just, we really tried to define what a special event was, and that came, again, with lots of meeting and trying to figure out what qualifies as a special event, and the procedures that should follow once we decide that it is, and that a special event permit is required. And so, it went from several pages to, um, a lot smaller, which also, we were working with wanting to make this into the accessibility mode that we have been trying to with all of our, our fee and resolutions that we've been bringing forth this year, to get that ready for that as well. So, I'm not going to read through that. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me, or anything that anybody else wants to add.
Council, any questions? I would say, or just not clarify, but just add to what Jackie said, uh, if the public wants to use a park, use a park. If you've got a group of ten people or twenty people, and you just want to show up for the park and use a park, then you can do that. There's no cost to that. But if you want to make sure that nobody else is using the same space that you're going to, that's where the fees come in, to make sure that that has been reserved for your activity or group. I just want to make sure everyone understood that, that we're-
Absolutely.
-just go and walk your dog, or take your little league team and practice, you know, football or soccer, or play a little Nerf football, if you don't, as long as you're okay. If somebody else is using the park and you have to go somewhere else, or you have to share the park, you can do that for free.
Absolutely. We encourage free play, for sure.
What I will say is, during these meetings, one of the things that we talked about a lot is making sure that Brigham City kept its small-town feel, meaning parks are parks, and you want to use city services and city things, and we wanted to make it accessible, and we didn't lose that about, about our community. You have any more, if you have any questions or clarifying, clarifications, please do that now with Jackie, and once you're done, yeah, we have you entertain a motion for an action.
And, um, so, but this involves, I, I'm trying to think of some things that have happened in the park in the past, like fundraisers, um, um-
Or shows.
Or, are, are that the type of stuff? Right. So, let me just give you a few examples, um, like, especially around, like, Manaway Reservoir. We have the High School Bike Federation come every year, and they host a tournament. So, that, that's like an example of, you know, using city services and stuff. Another example of a special event could be a wedding at a park. Obviously, um, when, you know, if they're, they're reserving a Bowery, sometimes there's a little bit of confusion of whether or not, when they use, when they rent the Bowery, does that mean they have the whole park? And so, um, you know, just because you rent the Bowery doesn't mean you can have the green space and stuff. So, like, it, a wedding, um, a, a may, maybe a big family gathering where you want a space, or yes, if you're using a Bowery to have, like, a concert, um, and you're inviting the public, um, that definition is in there of what a special event is. It shows that, you know, it just says, "A special event is any activity or gathering held upon public property or impacting public property for which any of the following is true." And then, we have that list of what that would include, um, you know, whether it, it involves closing public streets, sidewalks, or any, any time that the public is displaced, um, you know, she's using their, what, what we would consider, you know, that these are open parks, or, you know, then, then we probably need to make sure that this is something that is suitable and, and works, and that if they're requiring city services for that to happen, and that we're covering those costs. And so, would Manaway, like, when Manaway Town has their Little Valley Day- Mm-hmm. -their reservoir and stuff, and things like that, so, other municipalities, or need to do this? Oh, Derek, answer that.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Derek. I would say we don't want exclusive access to the Manaway Reservoir. We, we do close to the Manaway Reservoir for Little Valley Days after-
Myself?
No, you cannot.
The answer is, is-
My anniversary, that's a pretty special occasion.
So, what's added to this resolution is it requires my approval to close it, and I'm, I'm not going to grant that, sorry, Ryan, so, okay? Now, we're, yeah, so, obviously, the, the addition, that if, if there's a public safety concern, um, that we're concerned with, you know, their fire and police departments, we'll absolutely have that discussion. Um, and obviously, you know, with Manaway requesting it for us every year, we obviously grant that because that's their, their town kind of celebration, but, um, for the majority of events, we're not going to have a full closure of the Manaway Reservoir, um, probably ever, frankly. We, I guess, we do, we have a lot of requests here. Have the parks, the parks?
The reservoir?
No, just any of the city parks. Have a lot of requests, or do people-
No, we do not have a lot of requests for that. Usually, it's just a small space, or, you know, something like that. Sometimes they're inviting the public. Right. Depending on, yeah, depending on what your, you know, what your, what your event is, and if you're inviting the public, then that's when- I think that's what I was trying to say, but are doing, like, inviting the public to come and do this activity. Right, right. Like, if they're having, like, a market days, or something like that, you know, then obviously, a special event would probably be required, as well as business licensing. Makes sense?
Is there a process for, let's say, someone wanted to utilize the public property for an activity? The activity could, in many, many people's opinion, be questionable. Is there a veto process? I know St. George had an issue maybe a year and a half ago related to that. Is there a process in place, or some, it's a legal question. I, I don't know any, any thoughts on that.
I'm pointing my finger that way.
Yeah.
You familiar with the St. George situation?
Sure, yeah. Um, I probably won't talk specifically about that one, but let me give you generality. So, in general, public places like that are what we call traditional public forums. So, we, we, as a city, it is my advice, that we, as a city, not judge the content or nature of the activity in the park, unless we're going to exclude in, in total a particular type not based on content. So, if we're going to not allow, um, something that would tear up the grass because it's that kind of thing, then, then all of the things that tear up the grass are okay, right? If we're not making that judgment based on the content of the activity, but rather the other things that are involved there. So, so, it's a, it's a little bit of a nuanced question with a little bit of a nuanced answer, but in general, um, because these are what we, what we consider, and what the Constitution considers traditional public forums, that would be-
And, and, so, my understanding in general is, would be that, for example, in other, in other municipalities, maybe they weren't fully understanding different elements of that municipality, didn't understand the policy.
Yes, sir.
And so, that created the problem, whereas here, I think we have a better understanding, a more, more, uh, accepting understanding of the different organizations, and we're all kind of on the same, be of using, if you will.
Probably fair to say it's because of municipality that you're thinking of, that we have a better understanding.
So, okay, well, good. So, everybody's equal, and all thinking the same way.
As long as their applications is filled out correctly-
Yeah.
-and they're not lying on the application, then that's what happens in most cases.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Is not, is it just the green space city park, or is it- Any city property. Any city property. Still, like, runs or drives? Exactly, exactly. Yeah, if somebody wants to host a bike ride, or, you know, a, a five K, or whatever, you know, get, just any, any city property.
Like, a tournament at pickleball isn't necessarily a special event. It, it could be, but it may not necessarily be. So, obviously, we have fees for park Bowery rentals, or multi-field use rentals. If those events constitute a special event, then this would be enacted. If those events don't constitute a special event, then they wouldn't. So, we do have multiple events that potentially cross over between the two. Perfect example is, uh, the Fourth of July, city-sponsored event, but that would be a special event, obviously, and there's field use going on at the same time. Does that make sense? But not all are one-way or another. That, was that as gray as that could be?
By the way, the mayor pays for that special event permit. I'm just kidding. If we're exhausted, we can make a motion.
Quick question. Are the fees increased?
Yes, so, the, the application fee that has been increased from twenty-five dollars to a hundred, um, the special event application fee, that fee did change. The late fee has not changed. Um, the Manaway Reservoir user per day did not change, but the five dollar increase per, per participant would on that displaced, displacing the public, the thing. Which, we did a lot of research on that, of where the bike places were going, called a lot of people, "So, how are you recovering your funds?" And that's how a lot of people were doing it. Um, some of the other, like, obviously, with the, the streets being closed and that kind of thing, I don't know that it necessarily changes, because you had all those multiple fees in there, you know, adding up, you know, different cones, and all the barricading and stuff, and so, I don't know how much that increased. It just made more sense to make it one lump sum.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that resolution enacting a special event policy and procedure and adopting associated special event fees.
We have a motion by Councilmember Troxel. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Hip. We'll have a roll call vote. We'll start with Councilmember Smith, move to his left, and end with Councilmember Troxel.
Ian's aye.
Pat's an aye.
Dave's an aye.
Jeffries is an aye.
Brad's an aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. I would, just, something that struck me, the, uh, the fees for the streets, you know, block parties and stuff like that in the paths, along paths, just kind of set up, I think, over the la, this last summer and a couple summers where we've seen parades where vehicles have come through people, you've got that element, so that can happen either on purpose or on accident, and so, we need to make sure that those are properly marked and closed. This reflects the effort of the city to, to make sure that those are safe and safe venues, those fees, so, any of the, any, anybody in the public to this question, I just wanted to make that- So any of the, any, anybody that in the public did this question, I just wanted to make that little bit of a comment. We'll move on to, uh, number four, which is the consideration of a resolution amending and adopting fire and emergency medical service fees and by fees or service, services provided by Brigham City to special events. And we'll invite Chief Wilson.
Mayor, council, it's good to be with you this evening. So, um, I have two things to present. This first one is the, uh, resolution amending and adopting fire emergency services fees. So I'll give you a little background real quick, but before I do that, I want to say thanks to everybody that helped prepare this because it wasn't me. So, uh, city recorder, city attorney, our administrative assistant quite a bit, and our city administrator. So appreciate that help. A little background, we, uh, have a old, uh, resolution that does allow for, um, standby fees, but it was strictly for EMS or, or ambulance services. And it hadn't been updated for a long time. So, uh, with the changes that just took place, as you just heard, for the overall special events and standbys, it referred to our resolution. And so we needed to then update ours. And so we realized when we were doing that, that we also needed to include a few other items in that. Um, as part of that process, we did look at what other municipalities and jurisdictions were doing around us. And we got a few examples of those. And we'll say that we're not the, necessarily the lowest, but we're not the highest either. So, uh, we're, with our fees where they landed, um, puts us kind of, um, middle of the road, so to speak. Um, and we based ours upon as close as we could as to our actual cost. So we, we took what, um, our firefighters, uh, make on the, on the pay scale and then applied that and then applied a vehicle cost associated with the vehicle and equipment. It would happen as well. And that's kind of how our fees are based and how we came up with the numbers that, that we have here. So, um, as you read that document, which I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, um, these fees can only be waived by our, our city administrator. So we give authority to him to be able to make those, um, adjustments. And an example that might be for, um, Little Valley Days or something similar to that or a city, city event. Uh, we also say that, um, although we might be doing a standby with an ambulance and personnel, um, perhaps at a mountain bike rate, if somebody gets injured and they're transported, the, the transport is then billed the normal transport rate. So the standby is separated from transport services in, in that matter. And then, um, fees don't apply to Brigham City events, training, um, or other approved city, city events. Seeing and look at the table there that we put together, um, we did base this on a, a per hour with a two hour minimum. That was because when we called staff back or have staff sign up to do those standbys, um, that's overtime generally, that the city's paying for those individuals. So we are paying, uh, time and a half to them to come in and perform that. And then, um, as you go down, we did add, uh, the fire standby section. To be honest with you, we don't get a lot of requests for people to have a fire engine standby for things. That's, that's fortunate, that's good. Um, it'll probably stay that way. But while we were at this process, we figured we might as well go ahead and build that out because a lot of other, uh, cities have that. And so this way, if for some reason somebody had some type of special thing they were doing, maybe a controlled burn, and they wanted, um, that protection there of a brush truck with trained personnel, then we have a means to, uh, allow for that. So that's all I've got for you unless you have questions on this item.
Thanks, chief. Council, do you have any questions for the chief? If not, or when you're satisfied, if like you're taking action on this, we'd enjoy it.
So is this at the request of organizer to have a standby?
Yes, yeah, so.
Is there, is there, uh, thing that if an organizer's getting a special event fee and there's a certain amount of people and stuff, are, do we require them to have a standby?
There's a, there's a few different ways that can be triggered. One is through the special event process. Um, it can be that we look at a certain event and say, due to the number of people and the type of event was occurring at the event, you know, and then they, in the interest of public safety, there needs to be, be that there. The health department also has rules on, on large gatherings. Um, and I, off the top of my head, don't remember the number, but there is a count of people when they're there. They're, they're supposed to have certain, uh, level of, you know, first aid or, or responders available. So there's a number of different things that can trigger that. But we are going to charge these fees to somebody unless they, they have an event or they're requesting us there. Um, we would have dialogue back and forth at the beginning to say, hey, your event needs, needs this. And an example, we don't do a lot of these EMS standbys, probably four or five a year is all. Um, the biggest one is actually the bike race that occurs in, in Manaway. It's, uh, two different days. And we, it's also the longest. We have to provide an ambulance and personnel for, um, eight hours or sometimes longer at that event. And there are sometimes some significant injuries, uh, at that. And so, uh, that's a good example of when this would apply. Um, and they approach us and coordinate with us and say, hey, we need, need your ambulance and personnel at that event. Um, just to be clear as well, the reason why we try to charge for equipment is, um, if the event needs an ambulance there, uh, that ambulance is dedicated to that event. It cannot leave unless there's a reason that like maybe the patient's really critical, then they'll load and go kind of a thing, and then we have to replace that with another ambulance. Because if we have the ambulance leave, the event has to pause and stop until we get another ambulance there. So, uh, that's the reason why that fee is in place, because we, we have to dedicate that equipment.
Just a little bit more, Rob, I know your question that, uh, health department is a thousand people for a mass gathering and that would require an ambulance be present. So, but the major, I, I believe there's probably only one or two that we have a year like that. Majority of them is requested by the applicant.
You guys still do standby?
Uh, only when requested. We haven't done those for quite a while. I think they're pretty much handling that through just nine one one services.
Hey, somebody would like to make a motion or an action of your choice. I should direct a vote or how you. Mayor, I'm going to approve the resolution amending and adopting the firing. Thank you. Do you have a motion by council member Smith? Yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by council member Jefferies. We'll, uh, call a, a vote. Uh, we'll start with council member Troxel and move to her left and end with council member Jefferies.
Robin's an eye.
Ryan's eye.
Jensen's an eye.
Dave's an eye.
Jeffries is an eye.
Thank you, motion passes. We'll move on to, uh, uh, action item number five, which is, again, we'll have, uh, Chief Wilson up here, but it's an ordinance repealing and adopting fees for the provisions of ambulance services pursuant to this year's state legislature and, uh, law amendments.
All right, so I didn't have to go very far. I just was able to stay right here for this one. All right, so, um, this one is, um, being basically, uh, put into effect because of changes with state rule, state law regarding how ambulance services are billed. Um, and there's quite a background on that that, uh, you know, I won't spend time boring you with, but, um, because of changes with legislation that impact us as an ambulance provider, we then have to make corrections to our existing ordinance that, um, allows us to bill for that. So this repeals that completely and then we replace that with, uh, what we presented, um, to you, which is a fairly simple ordinance, uh, because we're simply referring to the state code that says we have to do it this way. But there's some things that I want to point out to you because, um, it's probably important that you understand or, or know, uh, the impacts of what the House Bill three oh one, uh, did to EMS in, in the state and to us in particular. So there's a few changes that will occur to our billing practices, uh, since this, when this goes into place. Um, so one of those items is, uh, we cannot bill for non-transports any longer, which we typically have not done that anyways as a city. So we would, we would never bill somebody for a transport if we didn't transport them. But we did bill for, um, like assessments. So if we arrived and did an assessment on a patient on a scene and used the equipment, we would have a basic bill for that service. Um, it, that, that no longer will take place because we're not allowed to do that. Um, there were some other changes that took place with the billing component, the, um, what we're allowed to bill for and how we're allowed to bill for that, um, such as, uh, we, we won't bill for, um, supplies. Supplies are now rolled into the base rate that the state has established. And we won't bill for, uh, procedures, that's also included in the base rate. But we can bill for the base rate, mileage, and the actual cost of medication, basically, is, is, uh, what it boils down to. Um, which we've done an analysis on that and we feel like, uh, you know, we're, we're going to be okay. We'll kind of wait and see over the next six months as we actually get data in on that. But, um, so that gives you the background kind of why the changes are taking place, a little bit of what the changes will be. And then, uh, again, the ordinance you have before you just puts us in compliance with that bill and, um, keeps us okay with state law. So I don't have anything else on that one unless you have specific questions for me or.
Anybody in council have questions for you, chief? If not, the motion would be to, uh, step the amended changes associated with the mun- no, that's the next one. The ordinance repea- it would be to repeal and adopt fees for the provision of ambulance services pursuant to recent state law amendments. I'd make a motion to that effect to, uh.
Second.
Anyway, a motion by council member Hip and a second by council member Jensen. This, uh, we'll start with council member Jeffrey Jensen and move to his left and end at council member Smith on this roll call.
Jensen's an eye.
Jeffries is an eye.
Robin's an eye.
Ryan's eye.
Thank you, motion passes. We'll now invite, uh, our, uh, Public Works, uh, Director and Assistant City Administrator, Tyler Pugsley.
You skipped it.
Oh, did I, did she, I did do that, didn't I? Thank you, Derek. Uh, our next action is a consideration of a resolution amending charges associated with administrative police services. We'll invite chief.
Thanks, Mayor, you skipped me right off.
I know, I, I.
How much you appreciate.
I know. Isn't that how it goes though? We like you, get out.
Um, so this is kind of a, a piggyback on, uh, what Jackie and Chief Wilson just presented to you. Jackie's revision of, uh, her special event fees kind of caused us to look at our fees because she wants to tie them in. There are circumstances when, um, a, a special event permit will come in and then there'll be police presence required. And for those events, it's, it's not just, you know, normal pru- uh, patrol or anything like that. They want dedicated officers there, much like what Chief Wilson mentioned in the ambulance fee. And so the first fee that I'll direct you to, or first charge, I guess, that I'll, I'll direct you to is our, uh, per officer rate. And the way that's established, the, the state actually encouraged law enforcement agencies to do a direct costing model about five years ago. And the direct costing is, is basically our median wage plus burden. And then there's also a, a small administrative charge for the use of our vehicle. So that's how we arrived at the seventy-five dollars per hour. You'll notice, um, there isn't a state requirement like there is for, or a health department requirement like, uh, Derek mentioned for a thousand people. Um, we leave that discretion to, excuse me, my command staff. And so when we get a special event that comes in, we'll review the application, what, uh, whether it's a, a concert or, or something that, that may require private security or public security, which is us, uh, we'll review that and then we'll determine how many officers they need and we'll, we'll assess that charge to them as part of their application. Like Chief Wilson said, uh, it's very rare that we get these. Occasionally we may get them for a marathon or, you know, a special race or something like that. But in my three years, there's only been one time where we've assessed these. The other administrative services charges, uh, have not been changed or revised since January of two thousand. And so thanks, Jackie, for, uh, prompting us to look into those. Um, we also did a comparison study with other departments that are close to us as well as around the state. And we, we adopted a, or suggest, we're suggesting to you a charge that would be right middle of the road. We're not the highest, not the lowest. And if you have questions about, uh, those charges, I can answer those now. But because the resolution was back in two thousand, we don't have a comparison to give you. Um, as far as the, the old fees go versus these fees, there, there wasn't really a fee that was identified in that resolution back in two thousand.
Thanks, chief. Council, do you have any questions for the chief? Seems to mirror a little bit what Chief Wilson said, so.
But, but did the, like, within the staffing or include, keep your regular staff and then add?
Correct, so they would be, yeah, they would, it wouldn't affect our minimum staffing for patrol. We would have to call officers in off duty to fill those, those spots.
Mayor, if there's not any other discussion, I move that we approve the resolution amending changes associated, uh, with administrative police service. Thank you, we have a motion by council member Jensen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Hip. We'll start with, uh, council member Jefferies and move, and go to his right and end with council member Troxel.
Jeffries is an eye.
Dave's an eye.
Pat's an eye. Ryan's eye.
Robin's an eye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Now we'll ask Mr. Pugsley, that I've already introduced previously, so I won't do it again, come and present the next two. First, we'll start with, uh, Arbor Day and then we have an authorization for some property exchange.
This is probably going to be the most exciting thing that you guys get to talk about tonight. But one of the things that is exciting is this is our thirty-ninth year of being Tree City USA. And one of the requirements of being a Tree City USA is that we have an Arbor Day proclamation signed by the mayor and read and presented in a council meeting, as well as hold and plan for an Arbor Day event. The last couple of years, we've, uh, in conjunction with the Day of Service later in the fall time, we've, uh, with the help of the high school and other volunteers and other groups, we've had a tree planning for our Arbor Day celebration. And we're, the date hasn't been completely confirmed yet, but we're still working on that. And so as soon as we have more information, we'll pass that on to the city council as well as to the rest of the community, so.
A lot of times, uh, that, uh, Day of Service lands on the week of each day's and so we have to.
Improvise.
Improvise, right. So if it's okay, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with a plant of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, even as paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Dennis J. Bott, Mayor of the Brigham, of Brigham City, hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five as Arbor Day in the city of Brigham City, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, gladden the heart to promote the well-being of this and future generations. This is dated the third day of April, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
You'd like to roll right into the property. Is Derek going to do that? Yep, Derek's going to do that, I apologize, Tyler. Turn the time over to, uh, Derek to present on, uh, authorizing the mayor to sign property exchange agreements with stake reparts.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, thanks, council. Um, we've been working, uh, just a little bit over two years on, uh,
Um, we've been working, uh, just a little bit over two years on, uh, property exchange agreement with Staker Parsons. Um, I'm gonna kind of go through a lot of the details in the agreement, uh, we'll pull the exhibits up on the screen here. Um, so a couple of reasons, uh, just, you know, publicly, what are we doing and why are we doing what we're doing? So, um, first of all, Brigant City, uh, is kind of the first parcels I'll, I'll talk about is, um, Brigant City has a desire, uh, and a need at some point in time to acquire additional property for future expansion of our cemetery. Um, we've been talking about, uh, this for a couple of years, actually been in the mayor's and council's budgets for two consecutive, three consecutive, excuse me, budget years, and, uh, that's about how long I've been working on this property transaction, uh, with Staker Parsons. So Christine, if you'll jump down to the, I believe it's the third exhibit. Uh, that one, next one down. Next one down. So, um, uh, the first part of the transaction is these five parcels on six hundred E, that's just south of our existing cemetery. Um, as part of this, uh, real estate exchange, um, will, uh, come to Brigant City in the exchange, and obviously our plan there is to, uh, acquire additional, um, property, uh, for the cemetery and future expansion of our cemetery at some point in time in the future. Um, there are no plans immediately for Brigant City to expand, um, uh, or fee selling, uh, plots in this section. Obviously, um, we'll work on that through future budgets and, uh, and, and future master planning of our cemetery. Um, if you'll jump up one screen in that exhibit. Um, part of this exchange agreement also includes, um, four parcels on the end of seven hundred South. Um, just recently, the city council approved a new general plan, and in that general plan, there is a road, uh, future roadway that will tie to seven hundred South right here. Um, as part of this exchange agreement, the city, uh, was interested and, and doesn't exactly have a specific plan of how that road is going to tie into seven South, um, but the city, uh, ending up with these four parcels, um, gives us the ability to continue to plan and work through development into the future, and, uh, and exactly what that looks like is yet to be determined. Um, so, you know, we're not gonna say, hey, this is exactly how this road's gonna go, but those four, four parcels give us the ability to determine that in, uh, the future. And then kind of go one up, Christina. Um, I know this is really hard to see if you guys pulled this up in, in your packets. Um, I'll kind of talk about it so you can zoom in just a little bit, Christina, sorry. Okay, so we've got three things going on, um, and we're going to record these parcel exchanges by recording this plat that's been prepared, and so there's not specific lot numbers, the plat and the legal descriptions within that plat will determine the property transaction, but you do see some of them are by, um, by lot numbers. So lot number ten up there, um, that parcel will be, will come from Staker Parsons to Brigant City Corporation. Obviously, we've discussed that in previous council meetings, the potential future site of, um, natural gas peakers. Um, that was, uh, talked about a month, month or a month and a half ago in a public meeting. Um, right at the eastern edge, um, it's, it's tough to see where the lot two is, the eastern edge of the mayor's pond. Um, there is two point eight two acres that will go from current Brigant City owned to Staker Parsons. Um, Parsons is working on a project right there that's essentially gonna, uh, assist them moving, um, gravel from their pit on the south to the pit on the north. Um, I won't go into the details of that, that's Staker Parsons' business, they're working on that, um, but we are, we would be exchanging two point eight two acres of property at the top of the mayor's pond, um, to Parsons. Um, while I'm on that, there, the road access that goes into the existing Parsons pit at that location, Brigant City would retain an easement through this plat, um, that we're able to continue to go in there, uh, for maintenance of the mayor's pond, maintenance of our, uh, power infrastructure that's in the area, and obviously future access and maintenance of the, uh, future site, the natural gas peaking, uh, generation facility. Um, while I'm on the subject of easements, just kind of right there on the, it'd be the northeastern edge of the mayor's pond, there's an old thirty-foot easement, uh, that, that was, belonged to Brigant City Corporation, Christine's mouse is on it. Um, the idea with that was for a future gas line up to, uh, bigger gas line up to the, um, closer to our electrical service center. We're gonna re- relinquish that easement as part of this, uh, plat amendment. It's something that we don't feel like we need, and, and Parsons asked us to relinquish that as part of the, uh, transaction. And then, right there on the, it'd be the top side of lot number nine, so it's in your bottom right-hand screen, there's, uh, there's a very small, um, go, go just to the other side of it, on that corner, there's, there's a very small adjustment that's gonna be made right there on that corner, um, after years and years and, and looking at property lines, actually the Brigant City gun range, our police department trains, and, and gets their certifications and their firearms, um, that fence is actually on Parsons' property and has been for a long, long time. So, um, as part of this exchange agreement, we're getting an additional point one eight acres from Parsons, so we don't have to move our fence and, and essentially the gun range will continue to function as it is today without, uh, any movement of fence. So, um, I'll talk quickly about some of the maintenance portions that we're agreeing to. So, uh, like I said before, the, the access road just due east, um, kind of southeast to the mayor's pond where Parsons' main access in, as part of this exchange agreement, Parsons will be a hundred percent responsible for the maintenance of that road, um, even though Brigant City has an easement on it, and there's actually two crossings right there, uh, and then as you move a little bit further to the east where we enter into the electrics, electrical service center, um, and, and Parsons obviously got access to their main pit, there's two crossings right there, one of them's Box Elder Creek, the other one is actually the, uh, S one, it's not the right word, the maintenance, where our power generate, where the power, where the water goes through the power generators and goes down, uh, a little flute and then ends up back in the Box Elder Creek. Both of those crossings will be maintained by Brigant City Corporation. Those, y- you can see in the, those one through six items right there on the left-hand side of the screen, those are all detailed in this transaction. Um, let's talk a little bit about the exchange and what it looks like financially. Um, so the total of all of the parcels, so you've got two point eight two acres of Brigant City property that's going to Staker Parsons, and then all the other parcels that I discussed coming to Brigant City Corporation. We did a, um, appraisal on each individually, so the total financial is, we would owe, uh, Staker Parsons roughly five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of pars- parcels that are coming to Brigant City versus net what we're giving to Parsons in this exchange. Um, as we've been negotiating this over a period of time, Christine, if you'll jump down, uh, to the next, I had a fourth one on there. Next one. Go to the next one down below. So, obviously, we've been discussing through budgets, the power line relocation, um, in the nineteen seventies, Brigant City signed an agreement, um, it was actually that the property owner prior to Staker Parsons, that at a point in time, the gravel pit expanded the, to our pro-, our existing power lines, it would be the responsibility of Brigant City Corporation to move those power lines. We've previously discussed that in budget meetings. Um, we are still working through permitting, uh, to get that power line relocated, we're working on permitting that, actually on federal ground, that's further to the east of where that is. And so the power line that's running north to south, um, would, is going to be relocated. As, as we started the property negotiation and been discussing with Staker Parsons, um, they sh- had a little bit of interest in essentially directly on the east side of our existing, uh, service center, um, there's a big mountain, there's essentially a pile of, of gravel in that area that they, they had interest in. Um, we have an, uh, vested interest in, um, having a more level site that we can continue to grow and develop as the city grows and what our needs up there around the service center. Um, honestly, we're out of room right now, we're, we're kind of tucked into a nice little crevice there with not a lot of room to grow. So as part of this exchange agreement, um, Parsons is at, we've asked Parsons if they'd be willing to kind of level that pad out for us, and in exchange for that, we, there'd need, need to be some relocation of power poles that feed up to where the north-south is, but essentially the east-west. Our cost estimates to relocate essentially three poles and do that's roughly six hundred thousand dollars right now. So what this exchange agreement, the, the council be approving the mayor to sign is essentially a net zero financial cost. So Brigant City would be responsible to replace those three poles, along with the north-south when we work on that project, and this is actually in the budget, um, this year, but there would be no, um, financial consideration or, or money exchange between Parsons and Brigant City, um, with everything that I'm discussing. The only other thing that I was gonna cover in this exchange agreement is it does give Brigant City two years to, um, move these power lines, and this is specifically on the north-south, not the east-west. Um, if you'll drop down one more exhibit, Christina. Um, this is the north-south power line relocation that we're wa- working on. Obviously, um, we do have a force majeure clause in there, we've got two years to move this, but for some reason we can't get permitting or anything else associated with that, um, it would require Parsons of Brigant City to come back to the table and discuss. One, one thing with this, i- you can see these two orange corners, um, we would, would, this exchange agreement would also include an easement, a flyover easement. Um, we can't get our power line completely off of Parsons' property, and so that, there would be a flyover easement on those two corners a- as part of this, obviously with that power line relocation. This is kind of the power, this exhibit shows kind of the whole power line, the blue on that map is where the existing power is, the red is our plan for the relocation. Um, obviously Tyler and Nicole, you guys have been helping me for years on this, you feel like I've left anything out? Okay. Questions? Total, there is a total of twelve parcels moving hands in this transaction, so. Parsons has been fantastic to work with too, by the way, Jackie, Jake. We do have, um, oh, I was gonna bring up one more thing, just administratively. In, in, in the agreement, in section B, the conveyance of exchange parcels, um, it does say two point five acres, that needs to be adjusted to three point two nine, and we'll, it, as long as the council's fine, we'll take care of that administratively, so.
How many power poles are we going to have to move here?
Seven, Troy, nine. Let's do. Eighteen total with all of it. The, the ones on that east-west line, there's a total of three. And the very corner one's very expensive, is it? It, it's essentially a ninety degree, now that doesn't look like ninety, what do you think, hundred, hundred and ten degrees there? That one on the, it'd be the northeast corner, that's a very expensive pole.
That gives us a lot of flexibility with all those, these forward in the future, looking out at peaker and road. Again, it's another great example of forward looking, about the future, a lot of different aspects of it, to include the cemetery, and I understand people are dying to get in there, and so it's going to continue to grow. I mean, it's great to be thinking that far in advance in all areas, with a lot of moving parts. So maybe we would entertain a motion.
I think the important part is we don't have a lot of choice on one side.
Yeah.
We have the law that we have to.
Contract on the one, yeah.
Contract, we've gotta move it, so, given that, and that, and that, they've worked great, great with us in the, anyway.
And hard.
I'm gonna go ahead and, and ask that we approve the, uh, property exchange agreement with Staker Parsons. To authorize you to sign the agreement.
All right, thank you, we have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Jensen, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jeffries. Uh, all those in favor?
I think.
Thank you, motion passes. All right, we're at the end of our action items, we do need to adjourn to a closed session to discuss the purchase exchange or lease. Real prop-
Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, city attorney wants us to go in a closed session to discuss potential litigation, and we can't even though it's not agendaed, so if you'll just change that to, add, for reasonable or imminent litigation.
Okay. Uh, property and the character, professional competence, or physical and mental health of an individual, or, and potential litigation. Yeah, a motion, and then we, we'll roll call in. So moved. We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen, a second by Councilmember Smith, and then we'll start with Councilmember Smith, move to his left, and finish it Councilmember Troxel on the roll call.
Ryan's eye.
Jensen's eye.
Dave's eye.
Jeffries' an eye.
Bobbin's eye.
Thank you, motion passes. We certainly appreciate everybody's coming. Have a safe ride home. Move into closed session.